I'm going to go ahead and call the City Council, a meeting to order for September the 20th, 2011, and I will be ready to go, Sandra, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Sandra, would you please call her up?
Kenyon?
Here.
Patty?
Here.
Tennant?
Farrell?
Here.
Adams?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Ray?
Feidra?
Here.
Mayor Jordan?
Here. Would you join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, on the first order of business, we have tonight, under City Council meeting presentations, reports, and discussion items, we have the nominating committee report. Alma Farrelly will be doing that for us tonight.
Yes, Mayor, Chairman Adella was not able to be here tonight, and she asked me to give the results of the nominating committee's selections for the appointments, and they are as follows. Animal Services Advisory Board, Mary Harrington. Board of Adjustments and Appeals, we didn't have any applications. Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals, David Holland. Anthony Clark. Environmental Action Committee, Meredith Lewis. Fayetteville Arts Council, Sid King. Telecommunications Board, Mitchell Spearman. Historic District Commission, Mayor recommends appointments, we approve. Catherine Wallace. I would move that we accept these, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to accept the nominating committee report and accept the nominations. Is there any comments from the council on this? Sandra, would you please call her up?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Feidra?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all very much. The next order of business is the consent agenda, and number one, on consent agenda's approval of September 6th, 2011, City Council meeting minutes. Number two, repeal resolution number 5911, bid number 11-52, resolution repealing, resolution number 5911, awarding bid number 11-52, and authorizing a contract with George Nunnely Chevrolet Incorporated in the amount of $16,960 for the purchase of one 2012 Chevrolet Colorado pickup truck and approving a budget adjustment. Number three, repeal resolution number 60-11, bid number 11-51, a resolution repealing resolution number 60-11, and awarding bid number 11-51, and authorizing a contract with George Nunnely Chevrolet Incorporated in the amount of $19,950 for the purchase of one four-by-four 2012 Chevrolet Colorado pickup truck for use by the Peter Division. Number four, repeal resolution number 6111, bid number 11-51, resolution repealing resolution number 6111, and awarding bid number 11-51, and authorizing a contract with George Nunnely Chevrolet Incorporated in the amount of $19,950 for the purchase of one four-by-four 2012 Chevrolet Colorado pickup truck for use by the Transportation Division. Number five, Time Striking Incorporated, resolution approving contract change order number one with Time Striking Incorporated for runway pavement rehabilitation and remarking Drake Field, and approving a budget adjustment recognizing FAA and Arkansas Department Air and Ops grant revenue. Number six, 2011, 2012 Select Traffic Enforcement Program Step Grant, resolution to approve and accept the 2011, 2012 Select Traffic Enforcement Program grant in the amount of $104,200 in federal funding and $13,500 in state funding, and to approve and attach budget adjustment in amount of $117,700 to recognize this revenue. I'll accept consent agendas read. We have a motion, a second, to accept consent agendas read. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Feidra?
Yes.
Okay, under B, public hearing. Number one, public hearing regarding section 51.137, monthly sewer rates, amending section 51.137, monthly sewer rates to the Code of Fayetteville Table F3, extra strength surcharges, specifically changed the industrial biological oxygen demand BOD surcharge. I will now open this up for public discussion.
And Mayor, I would maybe ask David Gerb just very briefly to describe what this is so the public will know what they're commenting on.
Okay.
This item changes the industrial strength surcharge portion only of the sewer rates. What it does is when we split our flows to the two wastewater treatment plants, we found that the cost of treatment for biological oxygen demand was reduced because of the flows at the Nolan wastewater plant. All of our industries that are affected do flow to the Nolan plant, and we recalculated the charges for that BOD wastewater treatment. Therefore, what we're doing in this ordinance is adjusting the surcharge to reflect the actual cost of treatment.
Okay. Any questions for David?
I would just state that this went through the Warden Sewer Committee, and again, it's related to the industries that, I guess, provide biological components to our wastewater treatment facility, and that actually helps us grow the bacteria needed to treat the water. So, and we were, with the division of the plants, there's a, we found that they, that there, we could reduce those rates to match the actual cost of dealing with that.
Good. Good. Any other, any comments, other comments from the council? All right, we will open it up for public comments. Any public comments on this? I guess I will close it to public comment, and we will move on to unfinished business. C, unfinished business. Number one, amend 51.137, monthly sewer rates, an ordinance amending section 51.137, monthly sewer rates of the Code of Fayetteville by reducing certain extra strength surcharges to sewer rates providing for an effective date. I would entertain a motion to go to the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Feidra?
Yes.
An ordinance amending section 51.137, monthly sewer rates of the Code of Fayetteville by reducing certain extra strength surcharges to sewer rates and providing for an effective date.
Anything else you want to add, David?
No, sir.
Okay.
I'm going to suspend the rules and have third and final reading.
Okay. Okay. Let me get some, well, we'll go ahead, I'll get public comment after this. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Feidra?
Yes.
An ordinance amending section 51.137, monthly sewer rates of the Code of Fayetteville by reducing certain extra strength surcharges to sewer rates and providing for an effective date.
Okay, city public comment on this? See none, I will bring it back to the council. Any final comments from the council on this? See none, Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Feidra?
Yes.
Okay, number two, revised ward boundaries, resolution to approve revised ward boundaries to equalize ward population after 2010 federal census. I understand we are going to have to table this indefinitely, Kit, is that correct?
Well, the City Council wisely last meeting tabled this resolution, and then in the interim, City Clerk Sandra Smith pointed out that in fact, this ward map is actually part of our code, has been enacted by ordinance as part of the code, and therefore, we need to, instead of having a resolution, we need to have an ordinance that will amend our code. So I would recommend to the City Council to permanently or indefinitely table this item.
I will ask for someone to...
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to table this resolution indefinitely. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Feidra?
Yes.
Okay, under new business now, number one, revised ward boundaries, an ordinance to approve revised ward boundaries to equalize ward populations after 2010 federal census, and to amend 32.03 of the Fayetteville Code.
Whereas, if a federal census reveals that ward populations have become unbalanced with substantially more residents in some wards than other wards, cities are constitutionally required to redraw ward boundaries to achieve fairly equal population in all wards. And whereas the 2010 federal census reveals substantial population differences among our wards, and whereas GIS has proposed new ward boundaries that do not cross precinct lines and substantially equalize each ward's population, now therefore, it being ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby approves the attached map as the new ward boundary map for Fayetteville, which establishes substantially equal populations for each ward, and amend section 3203 wards of the Fayetteville Code by adopting the new ward boundary map attached as Exhibit A to replace all previous ward boundary maps.
I believe you gave us a presentation last time. Do y'all have any questions? You want to see anything else from John on this? Okay, well, let's open it up for some...
I do have a question, though.
Okay, sure.
A question about when this goes into effect?
Well, it will go into effect in 31 days like a normal ordinance, but obviously, it's not into effect until there's another election based upon wards, which would be in 2012.
Okay, well, that leads to the next question because, so, does that mean that the representation of the people that have been moved changes? I mean, I think there's, I mean, until...
Well, obviously, you all do really represent all Fayetteville citizens, but you could say, yeah, the wards will actually change now. Each one of you still will remain in the same ward that you were elected to. There will be a slight change with some of the citizens that maybe once were in one ward now in another. This, the main effect of this, though, is really during the election of 2012, when then the voters will vote only within the new ward boundaries.
Okay, because I had had some questions about the impact of Mount Sequoia. I mean, that's, that's a pretty big chunk there, and, but as I recall, that was in ward three years ago, or big portions of that.
That is correct, and this ward boundary map has had to be changed many times, 1990, 1997, 2001, 2007, so some of these boundaries have been adjusted through the years to try to make sure that they always have an equal number of people living in each ward.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Good.
Mayor, I just, along those same lines, I was under the impression that when the County Election Commissioner was here, and I hope I'm hearing the same thing here, Kit, that he said that it wouldn't really be effective until the next election. So, are we basically agreeing on that?
Well, it won't have any, any true legal effect until the next election. It doesn't mean that it is effective right now, so that if you feel like you only represent people in your ward, you can only look within this new ward. Obviously, you know, we all are elected, and even though you're not elected citywide, we all work for all the citizens in Fayetteville, so it has no legal effect that way, but come the 2012 election, and even before that, let's say, August, when people would file for wards, you'd have to live in the proper ward, and if you had to get signatures out of a ward, they'd have to be out of that particular ward and not your old ward.
Sounds good to me.
Any other comments, questions on this? Well, let's get some public comment on the ward boundaries. Anybody would like to comment on the ward boundaries? Well, seeing none, I will bring it back to the council. Y'all will move.
Well, I would feel like we could go ahead with it. I mean, the only comments I've heard have kind of been questions, and I think once it's explained to them, the public, why, why this is necessary, I mean, you know, it's either one part of the zone or another part, so I've not had anyone that was really, you know, too upset about it, except the Mount Sequoia area looked somewhat, but, but I think they understood the logic behind it, so, you know, I would feel like it's gone through two readings and, and haven't heard any controversy about it, so I would move that we go to the third reading.
I think we're on the second reading.
Okay, I suspend the rules and go to the second reading?
Second reading. We changed it from a resolution.
I'll just move to go to the second reading.
We have a motion, a second, to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Feidra?
Yes.
An ordinance to approve revised ward boundaries to equalize ward populations after the 2010 federal census and to amend section 32.03 of the Fayetteville Code.
Okay.
Can I?
Yes, sir.
There's, so, I feel like because Ward 4 has monthly meetings, and we base the topics on things happening in Ward 4, and I'm wondering if, I'm wondering if it would, because of that, I'm wondering if the council would consider, so that there's clear, so that people aren't feeling like we're excluded now, we can't come, there's a perception involved in this, and also looking at, and I know we can explain it and so on, but still, people feel like, well, I'm not in Ward 4 anymore, I don't get to go to those meetings, which isn't accurate. Everyone can go to the meetings, but still, it's kind of a perception there. And I'm wondering, because it doesn't really legally matter until the election, I'm wondering if there could be a language that says to be effective in the next election, because what is, what are the, what is the benefit really legally of enacting it now, is mine? And if that's, if there isn't, which I think the work has been valuable, and we need to get to this, but what about really designating it and when it actually becomes legally applicable?
It would be possible for the City Council to put an effective date on this, but I would say you can't wait for November because you've got to file before that. So I would say the effective date should not be any later than July 1st of next year to make sure that there is no question about how to conduct the election next year. And I can't speak for the Election Commission about whether they would be unhappy if it's delayed that long. I don't know.
Matthew?
Does our constitutional obligation to change the boundaries have any effect on the timeline for ena, for making this effective?
Probably not, because it's the election that counts. Maybe what you all should do is just leave this on this reading rather than go into the third and final reading, unless we're already there. Are we already there?
I don't think so.
And that will give the Election Commission an opportunity to come to the meeting next week if they feel, I mean, next, the next meeting, to explain why they think it should go into effect earlier than that.
Okay, so we just hold it right here, all right? Okey-dokey.
I got a question here.
Okay.
I just, in reference to the, like, the ward meetings you're talking about, Sarah, there's no, I mean, anybody can go to any public meeting at any time, so I wouldn't think that, in Fayetteville especially, anybody would feel a prohibition about attending a public meeting unless they just got into town today.
Right. No, I agree, and I think there's, it's, we were, I received some emails about, well, can we still come to the Ward 4 meeting, even though that is, you tell people that that's a public meeting and everyone's welcome, there's still kind of this, am I, does it apply to me now, is, you know, am, am it going to, is it, are the topics going to relate to me, and there will be some fuzziness there. So linking it to something very concrete, I think, will help people make the transition, know who their representatives are.
So we just hold it right here for two weeks, and then this will be a great discussion topic in two weeks. All right?
Yeah, can I just, I'm looking at Ward 4, and I thought you were actually reducing, yeah, you are, so those, those areas are the ones that you're concerned about. They're mostly going into Ward 1, I guess.
Yeah.
Or just about 10, 10 or 12, 15 years ago, I was in Ward 1, then I went to Ward 4, then I'd be going back to Ward 1 again. That whole southern section used to be in Ward 1.
Right.
Okay, well, we're just going to hold it for two weeks. Is everybody good? All righty then.
Thank you.
All right, number two, AEP, SWEPCO, and Ozarks Electric, an ordinance waiving competitive bidding for this payment and all future payments to our contracts with AEP, SWEPCO, and Ozarks Electric Corporation for the relocation costs for electric utility poles, power lines necessitated by road reconstruction or widening projects within AEP, SWEPCO's, or Ozark Electric's area of service, to approve this payment in the amount not to exceed $142,953.21, and to approve a budget adjustment. Kit?
Whereas, it is not feasible or practical to competitively bid electrical utility pole and power line movement costs necessitated by road reconstruction or widening projects because AEP, SWEPCO, and Ozarks Electric Cooperative have exclusive jurisdiction to construct and maintain such electrical facilities within their service areas as designated by the Arkansas Public Service Commission. Now therefore, it being ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby determines and declares that it is not feasible or practical to competitively bid relocation costs for electric utility poles or power lines, and so waives any formal requirements of competitive bidding now and in the future for all such project costs necessitated by road reconstruction or widening projects for payments or contracts with AEP, SWEPCO, and Ozarks Electric Cooperative within Fayetteville. Section 2, the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby approves the payment to AEP, SWEPCO to relocate existing utility poles and power lines for the Cato Springs Road Project in the amount not to exceed $142,953.21, as shown on the attached SWEPCO summary of relocation costs, and approves the attached budget adjustment in the amount of $143,000. And before Chris starts talking, this was originally begun to run through the system as a resolution, and, and obviously, it's a no-bid contract, it makes no sense to try to bid it out, and I think we could legally, since the electrical utilities are charged by SWEPCO, I mean, by the PSC, providing electrical services, and so it's their poles and their wires, and, and other people can't use them, or, or they, they can't construct them, but because of the state law talking about competitive project, bidding process, then I thought it made more sense to go ahead and waive it now and in the future, so there wouldn't be any questions in the future, and so when, if this comes back with a later project, it'll be just a resolution, it will not be an ordinance again.
So, what you're basically saying, since we can only use these people then, pretty much in their right of way, so there's really no sense for putting that to competitive bidding.
PSC says these will be the companies that make the, make the electric poles and the power lines.
What questions do, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Chris.
Yes, this is for Cato Springs Road between School Avenue and Razorback Road. SWEPCO, their existing poles have to be relocated to allow widening of Cato Springs. They are located outside of the existing right of way, so the, the policy is, is they will be reimbursed if they're located outside the right of way, and we acquire a right of way that then requires them to move back. So this will reimburse them for the cost of moving the poles that are outside of the, that were outside of the existing right of way and are now in the, the new right of way. Total amount is $142,953.21. We reviewed this with the Street Committee on the August 30th meeting, and the Street Committee recommends approval. There also is a budget adjustment to transfer CIP funds from the Mount Comfort Road Project, that excess funds from that project into the Cato Springs Road Project to pay for this item.
What questions do we have for Chris on this? Who's on the Street Committee?
I am.
So it's, it's...
Oh, the Street Committee recommended, yes.
So everything's good with you?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay. All right. Any, any questions, comments from the council? I will open it, I will open it up to the public, any public comments on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council.
I would move, we suspend the rules and move to the second reading?
Second. We have a motion, a second, to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Feidra?
Yes.
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding for this payment and all future payments to or contracts with AEP, SWEPCO, and Ozarks Electric Cooperative for the relocation costs for electrical utility poles and power lines necessitated by road reconstruction or widening projects within AEP, SWEPCO's, or Ozark Electric's area of service, to approve this payment in the amount of not to exceed $142,953.21, and to approve a budget adjustment.
Maybe we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Feidra?
Yes.
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding for this payment and all future payments to or contracts with AEP, SWEPCO, and Ozarks Electric Cooperative for the relocation costs for electrical utility poles and power lines necessitated by road reconstruction or widening projects within AEP, SWEPCO's, or Ozark Electric's area of service, to approve this payment in the amount not to exceed $142,953.21, and to approve a budget adjustment.
Is there any final comments from the council on this?
I just have a question.
Kit? Kit, is there, would there be a, some kind of reason, I'm not thinking of, why we wouldn't
do the same with the telephone company and the cable company if they have to move their facilities?
No, and when, when one of those comes through, I plan to do the same ordinance and, and ask you to waive that now and in the future.
Okay.
Anything else from anybody? Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Feidra?
Yes.
Thank you all. Number three, amend Chapter 34, ordinance amending section 34.25, sales, Article 2, purchase and sale of city property contracts of Chapter 34, financing revenue of the Code of Fayetteville providing authority and procedures for the sale of biosolids. Kit?
Being ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amend section 34.25, sales of Article, uh, sales of Article 2, purchase and sale of city property of Chapter 34, financing revenue of the Code of Fayetteville, so that after amendment, it shall read as provided in Exhibit A, which is incorporated herein.
David?
This item allows us to sell our biosolids, our dried biosolids product. We will be completing those projects this fall, probably in late October, early November, and at that point, we will have a Class A biosolids product available for sale. It is a marketable product. This ordinance, following the format of the current hay ordinance by which we sell our hay that's produced on our wastewater treatment farm site, follows that and allows us then to sell that in a competitive fashion.
Okay. Any, yes, Matthew?
Well, I think this is the best thing that we can do with this material, no, no questions about it. I do want to make sure, though, that whenever we're designing this program, that we be aware of some of the criticisms that other communities have had with their biosolids programs, mainly that some people have criticized this product, that it's not safe to market it for food, food agriculture, but it is totally safe for lawn agriculture or, or other non-food crops. I'm not sure about all the science, I haven't done an extensive review or anything like that, I just want to make sure we're aware of that going forward.
We're aware of the, of the criticisms that are out there. We've been following, of course, the, the strict letter of the EPA guidelines, as well as the, the, following the science that's involved. There are multiple different types of biosolids products that are there. There are primary biosolids, and we have secondary biosolids, which is a, dried in a different process. It meets all of the Class A requirements, and it actually legally has no restrictions. But of course, we would tell people what it is, we are producing an MSDS sheet for the product, so that there wouldn't be any doubt as to what the product is, and customers could then choose to use it how they, how they wish. It has been produced in Mill Oregonite from Milwaukee for, literally for decades. Austin has been using it for many, many years. They market it to Walmart, to Home Depot, to local stores, as well as on a larger basis to, to larger, larger agricultural users.
I'm glad we're all ready for that, right?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
I would just say that it went through the Warden Sewer Committee and recommended it, and very supportive.
Okay. We will take some public comment now. Is anybody would like to comment on this item? this item? See now, I'll bring it back to the council.
Maybe we have the second?
Second.
Reading. We have a motion to second. Go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Bedrew?
Yes.
An ordinance amending section thirty-four point two-five, sales of Article Two, purchase and sale of city property, um, and contracts of chapter thirty-four financing revenue of the code of Fayetteville to provide authority and procedures for the sale of biosolids.
Maybe we suspend the rest and go to the third and final reading?
We have a motion to second. Go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Bedrew?
Yes.
An ordinance amending section thirty-four point two-five, sales of Article Two, purchase and sale of city property contracts of chapter thirty-four financing revenue of the code of Fayetteville, to provide authority and procedures for the sale of biosolids.
Any final com, Sarah?
I just want to reiterate that this is an opportunity, one to generate funds, but also it reduces the cost of transporting the biosolids hundreds of miles to a landfill. So this is really, a really important, uh, technology. So, thank you for all the work that has gone into it.
Kenyon, the comments from the council. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Bedrew?
Yes.
Alrighty then. Number four, rezoning eleven point three-eight-six-six, twenty thirteen East Mission Boulevard, Ruskin Heights. An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN eleven dash thirty-eight-six-six for approximately twenty-eight point nine-three acres, located at twenty thirteen East Mission Boulevard from RPZD Residential Plan Zoning District, RPZD O six-two-two-nine-nine Ruskin Heights, to CS Community Services, NC Neighborhood Conservation, and RSF four residential single-family, four units per acre, subject to a bill of assurance. Kit?
Being ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zone classification of the following described property from RPZD, uh, O six twenty-two ninety-nine Ruskin Heights, to Community Services, Neighborhood Conservation, and RSF four residential single-family, four units per acre, as shown on Exhibits A and B attached here to and made a part hereof. Section Two, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville to reflect the scene change provided in Section One above, and Section Three, that this property is subject to a bill of assurance offered by the property owner, and which runs with the land, and which limits the use and density of the property as shown in Exhibit C attached here to and made a part hereof.
Chair?
This is a property about twenty-nine acres located on the south side of Mission Boulevard. It's about half mile west of Crossover Road. A portion of the site is within the hillside, hilltop overlay district. In two thousand and seven, the City Council approved a planned zoning district called Ruskin Heights, a mixed-use project, uh, for this particular property. Uh, that project allowed two hundred and ninety-five attached and detached dwelling units, as well as approximately fifty-eight thousand five hundred square feet of commercial space. As part of that planned zoning district, uh, there was a preliminary plat approved for sixty-eight lots, uh, which is phases one through three, as well as infrastructure requirements along Mission Boulevard. All of those infrastructure requirements, uh, were completed, so all the, all of the Mission Boulevard improvements were completed. All the water, the sewer, and the stormwater improvements were completed for that, uh, development. However, the final plat was never submitted to be filed, and the project expired. That project, uh, the property has since changed hands. Uh, I believe it's currently under ownership by Metropolitan National Bank, and, uh, that is the applicant in this particular case. Um, they are proposing to rezone this property, because as you know, as you know, and we've brought forward other expired PZDs, there's really no, uh, development rights on the property. Um, so this, in this particular case, this is not staff bringing it forward, but the applicant. Um, they're requesting to rezone the property, uh, to Community Services, which is about seven acres to the site, to Neighborhood Conservation, which is a little under seventeen acres of the site, into RSF four residential single-family, four units per acre, which is about five acres of the site. The Community Services area is, uh, primarily concentrated along Mission, and then along the C one property to the northwest of the, of the property. The Neighborhood Conservation, uh, is really the majority of the property. Um, and it, it varies all over the, all over the property. Uh, and the RSF four is really the northeast corner, and then the, uh, southwest corner. Um, this item was actually tabled several times at the Planning Commission, uh, at the request of the applicants. They wanted to, uh, conduct neighborhood meetings, and at the, uh, advice of the Planning Commission, they did so on two occasions. Um, after quite a bit of discussion, um, the, the Planning Commission did forward this item to the City Council recommending approval. Eight to one was the vote. Um, and there is a bill of assurance, and I wanted to go through some of the details of that, uh, with you. Uh, that begins, uh, the bill of assurance form, which is, uh, approved by Mr. Williams, uh, is what they're utilizing, but they basically refer to some restrictions on exhibit. So I'm going to be on page twelve of fifty-four, and referring also to page eleven of fifty-four in the packets. Um, they've broken the rezoning into basically six areas. Uh, the Community Services area, uh, which is the mixed-use area, is Area One, and again, that's up along Mission Boulevard primarily. What they've indicated in the bill of assurance, that they're, um, listing are, these are the particular uses that would not be allowed. So they, what they've done is pulled out, uh, potentially objectionable uses that they heard, uh, and received feedback on at the neighborhood meetings, and have pulled those out. So you can see those cultural and recreational facilities, except for churches. They pulled out gasoline stations, drive-in restaurants, um, hotel, motel, amusement services. Um, everything is permitted under there, except the hotel motel. Transportation, trade services, liquor store, all those things are not permitted within that particular zone. Uh, Areas Three, Four, and Six are all proposed to be zoned Neighborhood Conservation. And what they've done in those areas is actually broken up the density. Um, they've only, they've limited to single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings. In Area Three, there's a maximum density of, uh, ten units per acre. In Area Four, a maximum of six units per acre. Uh, and also Area Six, a maximum, maximum of six units per acre. Uh, so those are, again, hopefully meeting some of the requests of what the neighbors' voice concerns over. Uh, they've also limited those to single-family uses only, and removed the two-family uses from that, that particular planning area. Um, there is one minor adjustment that needs to occur on the bill of assurance that I noted, uh, just today, actually. Area Five that they list is actually an area zoned, is proposed to be zoned RSF four, even though they include it in the bill of assurance as a neighborhood conservation. I think that was simply a typo, and they just need to remove that number three there on the bill of assurance, um, which can be, which can be changed, um, at, at some future date. Um, staff did recommend approval of this particular zoning, uh, district. I think it was, uh, really a good, a good process, um, that we went through. We heard, uh, comments at the Planning Commission meeting about traffic, uh, drainage concerns, things of that nature. Uh, we tried to address a lot of those concerns at the Planning Commission meeting, and then I certainly, um, think that there was a lot of progress made through the neighborhood meetings as well, um, through Mr. Jorgensen. So, uh, we are recommending approval of the, uh, three new zoning districts on this piece of property, which would then allow for someone to actually submit a development plan. Uh, the way this works is, this is a zoning application, as you know. A development plan would come forward in the future, and we would look at traffic impacts, uh, what, uh, improvements, if any, uh, would need to be made. Obviously, a lot of improvements have already been made, and those, this developer, this property would be given credit for those. But we'd look at things like the traffic signal that we discussed with Ruskin Heights, the access to Greenview that we discussed with that project. All of those kinds of things would be under consideration when we looked at a development plan. Um, and then finally, this is obviously still on your agenda called Ruskin Heights. I don't necessarily think that's going to be the project name, but it's what was submitted for us. So this is not a reiteration of Ruskin Heights, it's just what the property's been, uh, become to be known as. So, um, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay, I have one question for Kit.
Yes, sir.
Kit, how do you amend a bill of assurance?
Well, actually, it, it's not our document, so-
That's what I mean.
-the applicant would have to amend it. What I would suggest to the applicant is that, uh, under, uh, Exhibit B, uh, to the bill of assurance, that where it is listed number three under Neighborhood Conservation, that's just broken down, uh, removed from that particular section, but added to the RSF four section, because evidently that's what Area Five is, RSF four. And I would guess I would ask the applicant if that's, was his intent, and, and can we, uh, is he, does he want to do that?
I guess, who's the applicant here?
Good evening. Justin Jorgensen with Jorgensen Associates. And, um, yes, that, that sounds good to us. That, that was, thank you, Jeremy, for catching that, and we would be glad to do that. Um, I would, I was going to talk about everything that Jeremy did, but I don't see any reason to go over again, so if you have to answer any questions.
What I would ask is, uh, this is your document. If you would go ahead and make that change, uh, and submit it to Jeremy, uh, after the meeting sometime.
Sure, no problem.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Matthew?
Sir?
Mr. George?
Yes. Um, I have a question, uh, which I think you might be better at answering than Jeremy. Um, Neighborhood Conservation and RSF four are very similar zoning designations. So I was wondering why, um, in your negotiations with the surrounding neighborhoods, you chose to put RSF four on those two corners rather than Neighborhood Conservation across that whole tract?
Uh, the reason for that is Neighborhood Conservation, it's just to be able to, um, have some flexibility in lot design. It's got a minimum lot width of forty feet, um, especially in the phase one through three, there, the infrastructure is already in. That's going to allow us to, to make the best use of that, maybe not the best density, since we've already got it down to six units, but the best use. And the idea is here to, to go from a forty-foot lot to something bigger. And that, um, that zoning also allows the house to be built closer to the right of way, or closer to the street, in essence, giving a bigger green space in the backyard between some of the adjacent property owners and these houses. Um, and just to go a little bit further, there was conversation in the surrounding property meetings that we have, at some point in time, whether it be a preliminary plat LSD or during construction, that, you know, the developer conceded to go ahead and help, um, plant trees, or a, a living fence, or some sort of bury in between those as well. But to answer your question, the forty-foot width and the, the, uh, flexibility in lot design.
I think you described why you chose Neighborhood Conservation where it is, but I was asking why you chose RSF four for where the-
Oh, I'm sorry. The RSF four, just that area is because it's got, uh, it's got ravines and stuff that's going to be harder to develop anyway. There was a lot of surrounding property owners on that side that would like to have seen that RSF four, so that was the main reason there.
Okay.
I apologize.
If I could add to that as well, we, we spoke to the applicant about that section. Ruskin Heights, this was the least dense area of development as well. That, this was their treehouse area. Um, I've walked the site on, on many occasions, um, in the past, and this particular area does have a lot of ravines. It's probably the most significant tree canopy on the site. Um, so we felt the lower density, uh, would, would be a much better option in this particular, uh, portion of the property. It's going to be extremely expensive and difficult to develop anyway. Um, and so a higher density, we just didn't, we couldn't feel, we didn't feel comfortable at higher density in that, that particular area.
Okay. Thank you. I have one other question for Jeremy. Um, we received an email, uh, regarding a traffic requirement that existed for Ruskin Heights, the original plan on Greenview, to make portions of that Boulevard to direct traffic out of this area onto forty-five directly. I thought they made some compelling arguments. They also said that, um, you guys had responded to that person to tell them that, that would be a conversation for the large-scale development approval. Is that right?
That, that's correct, and I alluded it to, to it when we were on presentation. Um, generally, we look at street improvements or access to streets at the time of develop, of a development proposal. With Ruskin Heights, we were looking both at zoning and development, because it was a planned zoning district. So it was an appropriate time to look at that, when traffic actually accessed that street, when or if, uh, a street ever does connect to Green, uh, Greenview in this particular case. I think we would look at the same factors that we looked at originally, to see what kind of, is there going to be cut-through traffic? Is there going to be concern with vehicles turning left and going up over the mountain, more than getting back out on Mission? Should there be a traffic signal required again at, um, uh, I believe it's Lisa Lane where the access to Mission? And those are all certainly conversations that we would, uh, factor into our discussion regarding street, uh, street improvements, and make recommendations to the Planning Commission, uh, for those, for those factors. But I think it's probably more appropriate to look at that when we're actually seeing some kind of a development proposal, and understanding if, if something's even accessing that street.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
I would like to wait till after.
Sure. Okay. Let's hold it up for public comment. Now, a few ground rules. Everybody gets one turn to microphone unless an alderman brings you back up to ask you questions, okay? And direct your comments to me. If there's questions need to be, we'll, we'll go ahead and have staff respond, and we'll take our time, and everybody be courteous of one another. Uh, direct your comments to me. I can handle most, nearly anything, so, um, anything, comments you would like to make on this certain development, please come up to the microphone. Introduce yourself when you come up.
Hi, I'm Joanne Cavami, and I live on the, on the edge of the property. First, I would like to thank the dev, the applicant. Um, they did meet with the neighbors. Um, I feel like there was a lot of give and take on both sides. Um, this is the first time we've actually had anyone even talk to us. So I appreciate that. Um, I appreciate the bill of assurance. Uh, my concern is that, um, economic times what they are, um, and I realize that this assurance would go with the property, but if it would sell again, um, and the next developer decided that they didn't feel they needed to abide by these rules, um, my understanding is they could come back to you and then have this just null.
They could, I think. Kit?
And just like if they didn't like the zoning, they could come back to the City Council and say, "We need more dense zoning. We want to put an ARMF twenty-four on there. We can't, we can't survive otherwise." And then it'd be up to the City Council to determine if that was proper. And also, if they asked for a change in the bill of assurance, the City Council, this council or later council could make a decision to change the bill of assurance.
Yeah, there wouldn't be any guarantees that it would stay forever.
Well, one thing I, I would just like to have on the record is, um, for the future, many of you may be here a long time, hopefully, um, especially our new representatives, or one of our new representatives for our neighborhood. Um, but, Mr. Farrell will be our new representative.
Thank you, Joanne.
Yes. Um, but what I would like you to think about, and kind of keep in the back of your mind, is, um, one of the things that will keep Fayetteville strong is the stability of our neighborhoods. And if neighborhoods are a constant question as to what's going to happen around them, you're going to deteriorate our neighborhoods. So, we worked hard with the applicant to get to what we have, and for this to be, like, undermined down the road is really detrimental to, to at least three really well-established neighborhoods. And I, I hope that in the future, if something like this would come forward, that you really think long and hard before you make changes to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joanne. Who else? Uh, I'm sorry.
Um, and just to be clear, the, the bill of assurance is like a zoning. It stays with the property even if this, this project doesn't work. In this case, that bill of assurance would stay.
Absolutely. It is, it is part of the zoning, which can be changed by future city councils, whether either the zoning, or if the applicant comes back in and requests a change in bill of assurance. You couldn't just, you know, you know, laterally change a bill of assurance to make it more difficult or something. You could rezone the property without being asked, but you couldn't do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Come on up, Don.
I'm Don Connor, sixteen eighty-six East Shadow Ridge. I'm an adjacent property owner as well. I'd like to, you know, uh, go with Joanne on her comments about the bill of assurance. That, that's, that's one of the things that kind of bothers us a little bit. Um, but we really did have good results, speaking with the developers. Uh, I was real pleased with, with what we got out of the deal. Uh, I would just like to make sure that we try to consider the fate of the forest back there. It was recognized by the, uh, Fayetteville National Heritage Association as a place that needs to be preserved, and in the future, we need to think about that. You know, it's, they're wanting to zone it RSF four, which is, which is fine, but we need to take something to, in consideration on that. And since we're in zoning limbo, we don't know which representatives to speak to about these things.
All ours.
Well, if you keep your comments to me, everything's all right.
And, uh, other than that, uh, you know, we realize that we're going to have to go through the large-scale development process to make sure about the Greenview changes and what have you. And, uh, we want to make sure that, uh, the geological problems are dealt with along the way. You know, we just want to make sure to go on record that, you know, we're still standing vigilant about it, but it's a lot better than it was.
Thank you, Don.
America, I'd say, Don, I was, I was just going to say on the, on the representing, representative issue, uh, as, as long as, um, Brenda wants to, and it, and it's legal, as long as she wants to keep that part, and it's legal, it's fine with me. We don't want to, we don't want to make anything too quick.
You don't want to get in the press.
Hey, been in it since the first day. Thank you, America.
Who else would like to speak on this? See now, I'll bring it back to the council. Yes, Matthew?
Uh, Jeremy, the forested area that Mr. Connor spoke of, uh, I was wondering if the, in the bill of assurance, the, where cultural and recreational facilities, that use unit has been removed, I was wondering if that would prevent that area of the property from being preserved through parkland dedication?
I was wondering if that would prevent that area of the property from being preserved through parkland dedication?
It would not. And actually, that refers to the, I believe it just refers to the community services zoning, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Which is only along the front portion, Mission portion of the site. The forested area, where it's almost a hundred percent canopy, really is sort of along the southwest and then wraps around the southern portion of the site and up kind of up on top of the hill where the old old house used to be. And in response to Mr. Connor, a lot of this site is also within our hillside, hilltop preservation district and or protection district. So it does have additional requirements above and beyond some other neighborhoods might, which it requires the tree preservation canopy to be bumped up to thirty percent. Each lot has to have at least thirty percent undisturbed. If you're within that zone, you have to have engineered foundations within that zone. So all those are things, I think, that will help the quality of the development be at a much higher level in that particular area.
Okay. Just as a matter of clarification, can you list some of the cultural and recreational facilities that are being removed?
Certainly.
I don't recall exactly what's in use unit four off the top of my head.
I think I have it listed here in the staff report. Here's one more. I don't. But cultural and recreational facilities includes things like churches, school. Churches are allowed within that particular amendment. But schools, retirement facilities, gymnasiums, it's usually larger, more public types of uses. So we generally see a lot of schools, recreational facilities like pool, community centers, institutional uses, which really provide the gamut of anywhere from government facilities to hospital facilities. Those are all located within that particular zone or that particular use unit.
So it seems like the intention then is to limit a high amount of traffic maybe?
It is. And I think the the scale of this project, the slope of this project related to the scale of any type of use here is going to be, it's going to be very difficult to have a large parking lot and a large use. And so what our our intention in speaking with the applicant was to limit the scale of buildings even along Mission to something that was more of a neighborhood compatibility. And so I think that this this helps to to resolve that concern.
Okay. Thanks.
Anybody else? Brenda?
Well, I just want to say I'm really pleased with this developer and that they've been able to really work with the neighborhood and have had meetings with the neighborhood. And I know this project has has really been difficult on the people that live around it and and the result of the development was. And our experience with Jorgensen Associates has always been very good. And I feel like that they'll do a very good job on whatever they do. Now, I'd like to go ahead and move it to the second reading anyway.
Second, then.
And we have a motion to second, go to second reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Thedra?
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN eleven dash thirty-eight sixty-six for approximately twenty-eight point nine-three acres located at twenty thirteen East Mission Boulevard from RPZD oh-six twenty-two ninety-nine Ruskin Heights to Community Services, Neighborhood Conservation, and RSF four residential single-family, four units per acre, all subject to a bill of assurance.
Mayor, I think we probably should leave it on this reading then until Adala Gregg gets back, the other representative.
We get that bill of assurance correct.
And get that bill of assurance corrected and make sure that there's no other concerns that we've not heard about.
We're not in a big hurry.
So we'll just hold it until, yeah. Leave it on this reading.
Everybody good?
Well, it's good. I have a question.
Sure.
For Justin, can you, what is the, we'll come around again to to the development phase. But I'm I'm wondering what the vision is for stormwater management and also dealing with the, a lot of work went into the green infrastructure, identifying sensitive areas and that kind of thing. And then what is the vision of your team in regard to those things?
Right now, the the part that is in phase one, two, and three, the infrastructure that is in, we know that there's going to have to be some improvements to that. So that that will stay the same. And as far as moving forward, we don't have a plan, but we do anticipate, you know, low-impact development features. As far as street escapes, I don't know what that's going to be just yet because we don't have that plan. You know, the the feeling right now or the desire is to go with, you know, because it's in a hillside, hilltop overlay district, smaller streets, maybe some parking on streets, depending on how the houses lay in. But as far as detention and erosion control, I understand there's a lot of erosion control problems out there right now. You know, surrounding property owners have made that evident, and I've seen it myself. That'll all just have to be by city code. We'll take care of that as per it rains and, you know, because that seems to change every time it rains. But stuff like that will just be taken care of at that time of preliminary flat construction, so.
Okay.
Can't get into too much detail just yet. Don't have it for you.
Yeah, I understand, but it helps to hear about it. Thank you.
Sure. Appreciate it.
Anything else? Okay, so we're going to hold it on this reading. Okay? All right. Number five, RZN eleven dash thirty-nine zero-one, South Beechwood Avenue Love Box. An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN eleven dash thirty-nine oh-one for approximately sixteen point two-four acres located at eight eleven and eight thirty-three South Beechwood Avenue from I one heavy commercial and light industrial and I two general industrial to CS, Community Services. Kit?
Be it ordained by the city council, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section one, that the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zone classification of the following described property from I one heavy commercial, light industrial, and I two general industrial to Community Services as shown on exhibit A and B attached here to and made a party row. Section two, that the city council, city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the official zoning map of the city of Fayetteville to reflect the zoning change provided in section one.
Kit?
Chairman?
This is about sixteen acres located southwest corner of Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard and Beechwood Avenue. It's currently zoned I one and I two. It's the former Love Box Company, pallet-making company, which was in industrial use. It has been vacant for a number of years. It does have access to a rail spur adjacent to the to the east. And there is part of our, actually part of our future trail plan goes through the site. The applicant has submitted an application to rezone this property from the industrial uses to CS, which is Community Services, and Planning Commission did recommend in favor of that unanimously. The site is surrounded entirely by either commercial zoning and industrial zoning and commercial and industrial uses. However, they're not necessarily heavy manufacturing or heavy industrial uses. It's primarily warehousing-type uses or more quiet industry. There's a fire station, obviously, adjacent to the site along Hollywood Avenue. There's a McDonald's, a commercial center to the west. And across the street to the north, there are a number of restaurants. So there are, there's a mixture of uses surrounding this property. And we're going into a little bit more detail on that just because our future land use plan actually does not, is not consistent with this particular zoning. Our future land use plan, City Plan twenty-thirty changed from City Plan twenty-twenty-five, which shows showed this as more of a mixed-use type center to City Plan twenty-thirty. It was actually one of the amendments that the council made to show this utilized for continued industrial use. The reason for that was when we discussed with the Chamber of Commerce, specifically the Economic Development Team, they indicated that this was one of the few sites that was relatively large in size, vacant, and had still had access to rail service, which is unique within the city of Fayetteville. That specific piece of property was discussed with them. And so based on that discussion, we did recommend changing it to retain the industrial use. We have discussed this particular application with them. They've reviewed it with all of their staff, and they feel comfortable recommending rezoning the site for a couple of reasons. One, the access to the rail site, while it's important, it has portions of that have been removed to this property. So it's not actually into the site any longer. Secondly, this is a site that is in kind of bad condition. There's been a building at least removed in the last year because it was coming down on its own. And we, there is a potential buyer for this particular site to develop commercial along the frontage and potentially a student housing project along the south side. As we all have discussed in other projects in the years past where industrial zoning was going to more of a multifamily use, I think it was along Chestnut, we had some concerns about, you know, the compatibility of existing industry and providing multifamily use. In this particular case, when we reviewed the site, we really didn't have that concern. It's still in close proximity to university along our trail corridor. So it would provide ease of access in the future to university along along the trail. There's also mostly warehousing, mini-storage type uses, so it's not a heavy industry. And so that lets staff to believe that the return of an industrial use to this property really wasn't, it's not a big enough site in a lot of ways from our, the Economic Development Team at the Chamber. It's not a big enough site to market to most, most industries that are looking for rail access. It's simply too small for that. So we are recommending in favor of the zoning as well. And for those for those reasons, feel like it was justified. And as I mentioned, the planning commission agreed nine to zero with that recommendation. This would go to Community Services.
Questions for Jeremy? Matthew?
I like the rezoning, but I was curious if there's an easement along the rail line right now or if there's not, if there's a way to get one or if that would be useful.
I don't believe there is. I mean, it's indicated on the surveys where the rail used to be, but I think it was all private easement for the rail into the site. So it wasn't ever any type of, any type of public access easement. Like, the railroad used to own these properties. This is just a spur, so it really just provided access just to that one development. Once it was removed, it went back to the to landowner. The development team, though, that we have spoken with are interested in the trail connections as well as a multifamily development. If that is what comes through, we've had great success. They feel like the marketability of the trail system is is critical for them to provide that access. And so, you know, we're talking to four or five national student multifamily builders right now looking for sites in town, all of which are generally along our trail system. That's just an extremely marketable aspect for them. So we feel that that would still be maintained if that was genesis of your question.
Okay.
Roll.
And Jeremy, I appreciate you stating that the, you do not believe it will create appreciable increased traffic danger and congestion. That was one of my concerns. That currently is word four, and I'm in that area a lot. And you don't believe that it will be a problem with traffic?
Of course, we send all of these applications to our police department, car department, entire zoning development review team, and they provide comments back to us. We feel like access on this particular site, you have multiple points. I think that it's a five-lane section, obviously, out along Martin Luther King. So there's already a turn lane built in for students that do want to drive to campus and back. Most of this would be right turnouts when they're leaving and then left turns back in. So those are protected turning movements in that in that regard. And we would, we would simply look at, likely look at improvements along Beechwood and, you know, what improvements might need to occur with with the development of the property.
Thank you.
What else?
I have a question.
Yes.
Jeremy, I was just, during the agenda session, I was talking about, yeah, my recollection of all the industry that's been down there. And my question is, and it sounds like if there's going to be a multifamily student deal, that's one thing. But let's just, for the sake of discussion, let's just say that of this parcel, that half of it were used for something under CS. And some kind of an industry did come along. What would you, what would you think the possibility of that being rezoned back to industrial would be very likely in that area?
I think it would be reasonable for all the reasons that we changed the future land use plan. Still has close proximity to rail access. Even if the rail's not on the site, it's closer than many other sites are that we would like to have rail access to. So I think that there there certainly would be that opportunity.
Proximity being one of the.
It is. You know, one of the challenges is really when we looked at this property, I one is one thing. I two is a very different thing. I'm not sure I two is really, even though it's already zoned, a portion of the site is zoned I two. That's a, that's a pretty heavy industrial type of use, particularly for this area. We don't really have anyone living in the immediate vicinity, but on Hollywood, there are single-family homes. And not too far, just to the north, one lot to the north of MLK, there are, there's a whole neighborhood. So, you know, I two use really probably isn't compatible here anyway. And so, but an I one for warehousing or something of that nature would fit right in with the rest of the uses along Beechwood.
Thank you. Anybody else? What public comment do we have on this? See, now I'll bring it back to the council.
We spin the rules to go to the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion to second to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Thedra?
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN eleven dash thirty-nine oh-one for approximately sixteen and a quarter acres located at eight eleven and eight thirty-three South Beechwood Avenue from I one heavy commercial and light industrial and I two general industrial to Community Services.
Yes, I really support the form-based code, this Community Services. And it's a large enough piece that I hope it will act as a turning point for that area and really looking at implementing more of the form-based code. Would that be cheap? So spin the rules and go to the third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion to second to go to the third power reading. Sandra, would you call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Thedra?
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN eleven dash thirty-nine oh-one for approximately sixteen and a quarter acres located at eight eleven and eight thirty-three South Beechwood Avenue from I one heavy commercial and light industrial and I two general industrial to Community Services.
Mr. Ranger, just one final comment. I think just for the record, it's very rare that staff's recommending against the future land use plan. We took a lot of consideration, a lot of thought about that. But I think Ms. Louis made a very good point. This is a site that could make an impact with the Community Services zone. It's a zone that they chose to bring forward from the get-go. And so that that certainly played into into our recommendation as well.
Well, and I will also take some responsibility to that because I was, I was also seeing a lot of our industrial areas begin to just sort of dwindle away. And I mean, to Jeremy's defense, I think the mayor had some opinions on that as well. But, you know, we do have this now, and it's ready to go. So I will take whatever responsibility I need to on this as well. So having said all that, we have, we're ready to vote if we don't have any other final comments. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Thedra?
Yes.
Okay. Number six, ADM eleven dash thirty-nine forty-one, Vantage Center, PZD, Amendment number two. An ordinance amending residential plan zoning district titled RRPZD oh-five dash fifteen forty-three, Vantage Center, located at the end of Shepherd Lane adjacent to Frontage Road, containing approximately four point six eight acres to allow the addition of use unit number twenty-six, multifamily dwellings as a permitted use throughout all of the space in the four existing mixed-use buildings on the subject property as described herein. Kit?
Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section one, that use unit twenty-six, multifamily dwellings as defined by the city of Fayetteville Unified Development Code, is hereby approved as a permitted use throughout all of the space in the four existing mixed-use buildings and reflected in the planned zoning district zoning criteria for RRPZD five dash fifteen forty-three, Vantage Center. Section two, that the approval of use unit twenty-six as a permitted use on the subject property shall be conditioned upon the following. One, use unit twenty-six is permitted throughout one hundred percent of the buildings on the property as shown on exhibit A without restriction on the total number of dwelling units. Two, that the conversion of buildings on the property for multifamily use is subject to review in compliance with all applicable development codes. Section three, that this ordinance shall take an effect and be in full force at such times as all the requirements of the planned zoning district have been met. And section four, that the planned zoning district ordinance and the official zoning map of the city of Fayetteville is hereby amended to reflect the zoning change provided in section one above.
Jeremy?
This is an ordinance amending the original planned zoning district for Vantage Center. Vantage Center is a mixed-use, planned to be a mixed-use project located off of Shepherd Lane, east of the development that has the Toys R Us, Barnes &amp; Noble, that area. Lindsay Management Company submitted this request to amend very similarly to the project Southern View two to allow for multifamily uses to be permitted throughout the entire project. Just for a little background, in two thousand and five, this planned zoning district was approved, very, again, very similarly to Southern View two with a three-story building, the top two floors of which would be residential, the bottom of which would be commercial-type uses. There was an amendment to allow for an extended stay executive suite type hotel in that bottom floor. And then currently, twenty-seven percent of that first floor still remains vacant because they've not been able to mark, they've been trying to market but not been able to sell or lease commercial space in those buildings. This would allow for all four of those buildings. This would allow for all four of those, all, all of the space to be utilized for multifamily residential use. I do want to clarify though, it would not preclude them from coming back to commercial use at some point if it becomes a viable option for that, for that particular development site. So we, we saw no issues with this particular request and recommending approval. I did not see Mr. Jarrett here. He might be able to explain further, maybe he'll be at another meeting, which this is not on the agenda, but I don't have any further questions.
That's a good one, Jeremy.
Very good. Just to show you that our staff has a sense of humor. What, what questions do we have for Jeremy on this? Any questions?
Do we suspend rules?
Let me see if we've got any pub, okay. Is there any public comment on this? Senior, I'll bring it back to council. We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading, correct? Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Thedra?
Yes.
An ordinance amending residential plan zoning district entitled RPZ five-1543 Vantage Center located at the end of Shepherd Lane adjacent to Frontage Road, containing approximately four-point-six-eight acres to allow the addition of use unit twenty-six multifamily dwellings as a permitted use throughout all of the space in the four existing mixed-use buildings on the subject property as described herein.
We have a motion, a second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Thedra?
Yes.
An ordinance amending a residential plan zoning district entitled RPZ five-1543 Vantage Center located at the end of Shepherd Lane adjacent to Frontage Road, containing approximately four-point-six-eight acres to allow the addition of use unit twenty-six multifamily dwellings as a permitted use throughout all of the space in the four existing mixed-use buildings on the subject property as described.
What final comments do we have in the council? Anything? Okay. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Thedra?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any announcements that needs to be made tonight for the council?
I've got it.
Your honor?
A word for bulky cleanup, Al Creek School and Sugar Food Parking Lot on the twenty-fourth of September. A great time to clean up the neighborhood and dispose of large items.
Could anybody come to the cleanup?
Anybody.
It's a public cleanup.
It's a public cleanup.
Anybody with the City of Fayetteville, Waterville, who's a resident of the City of Fayetteville can come. Any word can come. Yes. Yes, Kit?
I was contacted late this afternoon by the attorney representing Rogers Group. He had been called out of town for a family emergency for a while and asked if we would agree to an extension of time for him to file his brief, which is, would currently be due on September twenty-ninth, and he wants it until October the seventh. I would recommend that we grant that, but you're my clients, and so I want to make sure that you are appraised on this, and if no one has an objection, I will tell him that I will agree to that extension.
Yes, Dave.
Mayor, I'd also like to, to let everybody know about the electronic waste, the electronic recycling. It's an e-waste roundup that will occur at the Arvest Ballpark. This is something that doesn't happen very often. The last one was almost a year and a half ago. Any residents of Washington or Benton County can go. This is funded by an ADEQ grant, and that is on October eleventh and twelfth at the Arvest Ballpark from nine AM to six PM. We cannot accept electronic waste at our bulky waste cleanups. This is the, the way to get rid of them free of charge. Otherwise, you have to take them to Washington County at a five-dollar-per-item fee. So this is an excellent opportunity for all of our citizens in Fayetteville.
Okay. Anything else?
Word for meeting Monday night.
Okay. Chairman?
The council on its agenda, upcoming agenda, I believe, will be seeing a Fayette Junction rezoning request. We had a number of public meetings back in two thousand and eight on the Fayette Junction master plan, so we're just trying to get the word out. If anyone has questions about that, contact City Planning Office. We can certainly give you information. We've sent out certified mails. We've sent out, put signs out. We've answered, went through Planning Commission several times on the rezoning request, but just want to get the word out about that, about that item.
Okay.
Hi, I was just wondering.
Okay.
At the beginning of the meeting, Alderman Farrell read up the announcement about the nominated committee report and who was on that, and I just think some of the people were here tonight. I think it's fantastic that we have citizens who come, take the time to apply for those positions. The four of us, Gray, Farrell, and Kenyon and myself spent a lot of time on that, and I think there were some great applicants, and I would just like to encourage citizens